Please, ladies and gentlemen. For our viewing audience, this is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole. We're meeting today for budget presentations, a presentation on revenue projections. And the Acting Commissioner of Finance, Mr. Bill Omero, will be making our presentation. Is that right, Bill?
Yes, sir.
You're on the agenda here, so I can read well, at least for the moment.
I'm it, for now.
Thank you. You might want to, you're going to probably, why don't you do a better job of introducing or expanding on the introduction I just gave?
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
The first thing I'm going to do is start with apologies, so you know you're in trouble when. We are still printing the handouts, and we ran out of ink, and so we had to change the cartridge. So I have technological challenges, and we will have handouts for you as soon as they are completed. Second apology is, I have too many handouts. I got into preparing this. We got April numbers last night, and so I've been trying to update this so you would have the most recent information. And so I've got, I went to Excel, which is my comfort zone, rather than PowerPoint, and trying to make it into a presentation. And so I've probably given you way more handouts than you want, but you can throw away anything you don't want to look at. So with that preamble, what I think I'm supposed to talk to you about is the revenues that are in the mayor's proposed budget. And it's on page two of the big book, is the summary, and then the detail is pages three, four, five. And so the first thing I want to do is segregate the difference between economic forecasting or economic predictions and the accounting of which line everything goes on. And so I want to share with you what we have done in order to prepare the 2010 revenue. We track, we've started tracking what we think are some key economic indicators that we can get our hands on. Most of the information that is in national or state form, it takes a long time to compile it, and so it's usually three to four months after the fact, which diminishes the value to us when we're already three months past when we were asking what happened in December or January or whatever. So we've tried to piggyback on some of those economic indicators, as well as some within the urban county government, and to use those to help us build the revenue projections. We also track the top 30 employers of LFUCG. And within that group, we've tried to subdivide them into segments of government, healthcare, manufacturing, and then other services or retail or whatever, and tried to look at those as a bellwether for Lexington. And then we also have talked to the University of Kentucky Department of Economics. We've also massaged the data, trying to analyze it as best we can. And we have not done that for April numbers, but for prior months we have. So with that, let me show you a few of the things that we look at as far as economic indicators. The first thing is the unemployment rate, which is currently very important to us right now. And you will get copies of all of this as soon as the printer does its thing. This is tracking of both Fayette County, the Lexington metropolitan service area, as well as the state of Kentucky and national. And this is a visual look at it. And as you can see, Kentucky is this line here. The nation is this light blue line. This other color is the Lexington MSA. And the county of Fayette is the smallest one right here. One of the announcements, thank you, that comes out is unemployment. And it was released Friday that unemployment went up in 120 out of 120 counties in Kentucky. However, as usual, Fayette County had the lowest unemployment rate in the state of Kentucky. And what is even more significant from my point of view is it was flat. We had a big jump in unemployment following the national trend, but both here and the MSA, we stabilized between February and March. Is that a trend? I hope so, but those are the numbers as we have them today. So if you want to see it a different way, this is Lexington's unemployment rate for three years comparison, so you can see seasonality. And here is January, February, March. It looks like April didn't get onto the, well, April hadn't been released yet. So this is the most up-to-date information we have. So that is unemployment. We look at employment, the inverse. Again, you can see what is not surprising, employment is down compared to the previous two years. However, if you look since January, even though employment is down, it is still higher than 2006. That's about the best I can give you out of reading the cup half-full there. There's a lot of attention on the home market, so we're tracking home sales by month. Again, you can see the seasonality, and you can see that it is still a depressed market. That's the bad news. As important as home sales that closed are pending sales. Again, you can see the seasonality and see that it is still depressed. However, the underside of that is, is that the average home value has only declined in small, single digits in Fayette County, whereas if you read the headlines, there are other communities that have double-digit declines in the value of the home. And to finish the analysis of the home market, we look at foreclosures. We tried to use some national information and found it very unreliable, so we've gone to the Tax Commissioner's Office, and they are sharing their information with us on a monthly basis. So these are actual foreclosures by the Tax Commissioner. And one of the things interesting is, is that they are actually lower than the same period last year, and this past month, they were a measurable amount lower. Is that a trend? We hope so, but we'll have to wait and see as the monthly data comes in. We also look inside LFUCG for information from other departments. And so this is tracking of building permits, and this made the newspaper. We had three months of increases over prior year, January, February, and March. April came in slightly lower than same period last year. The sum of the first four months is still greater than the sum of the same four months last year. We hope that's a bellwether trend. We'll have to wait and see. The other thing we would look at is applications for new businesses in Fayette County. Again, this is presented to you to show seasonality. We also had a slight increase month over month the last two months. April came in a little less than the same period last year. The interesting thing is, is there's not that much variance in the month of April year to year, whereas there is more in some of the summer months. That may or may not be a good indicator. In times of unemployment, people choose to be self-employed and will come in and register as a new business, and then may or may not actually follow through on their business So those are some of the economic indicators that we've tried to look at and incorporate in any analysis that we have on projected revenues. I also want to point out some of the uniquenesses of the Fayette County area. This is out of the annual consolidated accounting financial report, and we report each year as opposed to 10 years ago, our 10 major employers. And so here they were in 2008 and 1999. And if you will look at the mix, you have two for-profit out in the top 10. The other 10 are either business or nonprofit medical. And we feel that that is significant to talk about the employment base in Fayette County. And one of the reasons why, when we were talking to the University of Kentucky, they acknowledged that Lexington may have a softer ride through this recessionary time than the state as a whole or the nation as a whole. And so we're very much looking to see if that turns out to be the case. Let me talk about the top 30 employers as well. I mentioned those before. That is something that we don't share, but internally, we track that. And the 30 largest employers in Lexington generate about 45% of our total payroll withholdings. So that's quite a large base for those 30 employers. We track their trends year to date, year after year. Do I need to pause? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Right. I would love to give it to you. They're collating them now. We've had copying difficulties. I apologized at the first, and so I do apologize for not having those ahead of time. And they're supposed to be printing and stapling feverishly to get here as soon as possible. Sure. This is also in the CAFER, in the back, in the reference information, but it's also part of the handout that I have prepared for you. To continue talking about the top 30, we try to track those trends year over year and see how their payroll is tracking. It's easier to track the top 30 than it is the top 20,000. And so with a smaller population, we can better track how those payroll results come in. So those are kind of the economics that we look at in order to build the budget that we have presented to you. And this is, again, I'm sorry that the handout isn't here yet, but I referred to you to page two in the, what I call, the big book. And it is, in summary, the revenues by large category. And it shows a dollar change and a percent change with the 2009 adopted budget. However, when we get into the line by line, we're going to be showing you what we predict the 2009 ending balance to be, and shows the percentage change compared to the 2009 projected. So I have given you what I call Page 2A, so that your variance column and your percent change all match from the summary page to the detail page. So that's, that's the reason that I've restated it, so that in past years, this went up 2.8%, but on this, it's 1.7, and it's because it's a comparison to a different base. And so I was trying to make sure that all the comparisons were comparable. Have I totally confused you so far?
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Do you know about how long it might be? I think I'm translating this as a little bit of an anxiety that's perhaps shared by the others. The difficulty of seeing the text on the overhead is making it tough to follow the value of your data in your presentation. So I'm wondering if, I guess we keep going?
Well, I thought, we can take a recess if you would like.
I'm just wondering if you, any idea, were they pulling the, how many documents are?
Well, it was 20 pages. I asked for 20 copies.
20 pages each?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, so how far are we through the presentation right now?
Halfway. And it gets geekier after that because we have spreadsheets.
Well, then we, I mean, I'm losing a lot of it, the value of it, because I'm really struggling to try to read the numbers. And unless you're going to, unless you can really clearly, you know, really say, these are the headlines, this is your takeaway, and this might be something you're missing. Okay? Does that work for you all?
It's in our budget book, so I mean, it's on the small book, too.
I'm bringing that, okay.
It is.
Well, then tell us which pages that's on again.
I am restating page two in the large budget book. Yes, sir. It is.
If we got it on our, in our, there we go. That helps.
Maybe 150? I really want, I was ready to go to a spreadsheet that was much smaller, so I'm a bit, I'm trying to decide the best approach. I guess, let me give you some summary.
Yeah, yeah.
Based on these large categories, and then when the copies come, we can talk about the drill-down. How about that? Because the significant events that I wanted to point out to you, and in my handout, I've got them highlighted with numbers so that we could talk. I'm talking about variance number one, two, three. I was trying to make it so everyone could follow, but best laid plans of mice and men. The first major category is ad valorem taxes, and I wanted to touch base with you on two significant parts of that. Part of it is the real estate taxes, and we have backed off what has traditionally been the increase of 5-plus percent in the real estate taxes revenue to us, and have gone with a 4.4%. It's a total increase of $762,000 over the 2009 projected. And discuss that with the council clerk as to the realism of that projection, as well as, I wanted to point out, the motor vehicle taxes. And we have a loss of revenue year over year in the motor vehicle ad valorem taxes. We're looking at about a $225,000 decrease in the, in our original 2009 adopted budget in that category, and feeling like it will be flat going into 2010. And the main reason for that is people have stopped buying new cars. So the total assessment value in that category is not growing. As a matter of fact, it shrank this year due to depreciation on used cars. So we have tried to compensate for that in our projection, so that a total in that category is only 2% this year. We are showing an increase, but less because of the noise that's going on in the real estate category. The next category is license and permits, and that is where all the, all the angst is, as well as that's going to make or break how LFUCG's budget goes. That's where the lion's share of the revenue is, and the largest one in that category is the payroll tax. We, as I said, looked at the top 30 employers and tried to track how they were trending. They were still trending in a positive mode. We also did an analysis of everyone else and found that those people who had paid us were still, more people were paying more payroll on a, on a year-to-year basis than were paying less. The people that did pay us were still showing a slight increase in their payroll remittance to us this year over last year. However, what we found was more and more people were paying us late. So we have what I am talking, what I'm using as a slow pay problem, rather than a low pay problem, through February, which is what we were trying to analyze when we put the budget together. April has come in, and it is less than last year. We have some slow pay that we have been able to identify, but even after adding those in, we are still under same period, year to date last year. And this is where I was trying to show you the accountant's spreadsheet, because we have data going back into the 90s, and we went and looked at the 2000, 2001 results, which was the last major recession. And payroll withholdings shrank to 1.83% increase over the prior year. We have never, that we can find, had a year where we collected less payroll than we did the year before. So we haven't found an incidence where payroll withholdings total revenue for the year shrank in comparison to years before. So we were looking at predicting 2009 to come in at about a 2.5% to compensate for the fact that we usually go into a recession slower than the rest of the country. And we anticipated it catching up to us in the fourth quarter of '09 and taking some of the wind out of our sails. And then we felt that we were hopeful, actually, that we would come out of the recession in FY 2010. And one of the things we do is look at economic briefs, which the governor's, yes?
Excuse us, Bill.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon, I think, is thinking the same thing I was, so go ahead.
Are you sure I was?
Well, you said it. You said you were.
Oh, okay. Bill, would you repeat what you just said about payroll, revenue from payroll withholding? We've never seen a year where the revenues were less than the previous year. Did I understand that correctly, or would you repeat that?
You understood that correctly. Our observation is, is that our payroll withholdings have never shrank from the year before.
Now, does that include?
Rate of increase has slowed or accelerated, but we've never taken in a total amount less than the year before.
Does that include 2001, 2002?
Yes.
Okay, because that was a pretty down.
I'm going to say something different from net profit, so I'm only talking about the payroll category.
All right, thank you.
All right. Does that help? So we have based the projection of net profits as slowing in 2009 and then moderately rebounding in 2010. And that's where forecasting or prognostication comes in. And I guess that's kind of where I overdid it with giving you all these graphs, but this is all we have to go on. And is it, when something goes up or down, you hold your breath and say, is it a trend or is it anomaly? And we looked for the revenues to take a nosedive in December. We looked for it in January. We looked for it in February. We got positive signs. It reinforced the fact that we have always seen in the past that Lexington has slowed behind the curve from the nation or the state for recessions, and so we felt that that was validating, that this one would be slow to arrive, too. We are hopeful that we will quickly get out of it as well. The spike in unemployment, we went from 5% to 7.4 in a two-month period. So the slowing of revenue in April is following the leading indicators. And so will summer employment help us? It always has before. We hope it does this year as well. One of the things I was going to show you is, we also read the economic briefs that are published every Friday by the Governor's Office of Budget and Policy. And the one from May 1st has ups and downs in it, but let me read two contradictory things. from May 1st has ups and downs in it, but let me read two contradictory things. Income and spending drop. An income and spending report said after-tax incomes were flat in March, and they're talking about national, not state or local. The fact that spending turned negative again in March is a worrisome sign about future economic prospects. Followed by that is consumer confidence gets a boost. A key indicator of consumer confidence rose in April to its highest this year, with some expectations the economic downturn may have reached a bottom. And then immediately after that is consumer sentiment index shows that consumers felt more confident about the economy last month than in any time since last September. Then you go to a manufacturing activity indicator said it rose for the four straight months, which usually is a suggestion that the sector may be stabilizing and an indicator that the recession is abating. So we have signs that are contradictory. However, we're hopeful that we've hit bottom. Of course, on top of that, gasoline supplies fell and gasoline prices went up. Jobless rate, so they go both ways. So it's, some people have said it is not a science, it's an art of projecting, and so I guess that's the point I'm trying to make here. But that is, that is our largest revenue stream. That is the one that we have to monitor the most, and we are entering into a very elastic period where it can go down or up very quickly. So that's the soft spot in our revenue, which is true every year. The other major category is business net profits. We predicted, actually, in the '09 adopted budget, that net profit revenue would be less than last year. We budgeted as being down. And then through January, we were $2 million more than last year, so our projected '09 reflected that, and we said it wouldn't be as bad. We also were predicting a unusual collection in April, a one-time event that would help our 2009 net profit revenues, and so we, we actually upped the estimate for the '09 net profit. We then had predicted a decrease in net profit revenues for 2010. We are actually predicting a $2 million erosion in that line item. That reflects the economy. The net profits are always a lag from when the actual economy is worse, and the suppression of the net profits, we think, will show up in next April 15th returns. So we backed off of net profits at $2 million less. Unfortunately, April results came in, and even with a one-time event in our April numbers, we have $1 million less in April than the same period last month, and instead of being $2 million ahead of last year, we're now a quarter of a million dollars ahead of last year. So that shows the elasticity of that revenue stream, and the, the economy has shown up there. That's the bad news. The good news is, the other thing we were very concerned about was the amount and the timing of corporate refunds. And so we have been tracking that, and just to show how well we predict things, we have had fewer refund applications so far this year than the same period last year, and we have refunded less dollars this year than last year. So that's just the opposite of what we thought was going to happen. In this case, that's a good thing. The other two major categories in license and permits are insurance. Insurance, we predicted flat. It's been somewhat soft, and so we backed off on that prediction for '09 and then predicted a modest 3% increase in 2010. And then our star performer this year is franchise permits, and that is Mother Nature. It's how cold or how hot, how dry or how wet, and we are currently double-digit over last year in that category. Excuse me, we're 9.8% higher year-to-date in that category in '09. We are predicting a, a 3% increase in 2010. So after talking through all of those, those are our four major categories and are the lion's share of the license and permits. We have in that category a 1.6% increase in 2010 over the '09 projected. I'm not sure how much interest you have in some of the others.
That's just confirming, absolute dollars. That's the $3,717,500.
Yes, sir.
1.6%.
We are showing slow pay, not just in the public sector, but in the governmental sector as well. Our correction and detention fees are running behind this year, and that is we're being paid later. So we have a decrease in that revenue line for 2009 and then it flat going into 2010. So that actually affected our services. And then I guess the only other one that I would draw your attention to, which has already been talked about, is other financings? Yes, sir.
Bill, excuse, Councilmember Stenit.
Repeat, you said detention revenue was projected to go down because of slow pay?
Yes, sir.
But we projected it flat for FY 2010?
Yes.
Because in the budget book, it doesn't have it flat. It has it going down by $1 million for FY '10.
Well, I may have looked too quickly.
I just want to confirm that, because if it's not, it's another $1 million we got to put in this budget.
Well, I'm looking-
I'm just going by the summary book that we got after we got the big book.
Okay. I was referring to the line-by-line, and at the bottom of page three, the work released detention center, prison fees, inmate medical, other detention, juvenile post had a zero variance '10 to '09. So that was what I was referring to.
Okay, because in the other book, they break it out, just detention revenue is $6,553 in '08, $5,705 in '09, and FO 10, $4,762, for a decrease of 6.5%.
Well, I will follow up with those numbers because I was talking from this detail.
Okay, because there may be a difference there.
I will, I will look at it.
Thank you. And then also under services, I noticed under golf course collections, could you look at that? Why we're, why we're going to raise golf course fees but project less revenue?
I did see that, and unfortunately, my support team is off today.
I noticed that. They're not here.
And I was not able to get an answer to that question before coming before you.
If you could give us more detail on that.
I will.
Thank you.
If you'll give me just a moment, because if I don't write it down, I won't remember.
Write it down. By all means, please.
Vice Mayor.
As well as parks programs, can you double-check that, too? Are they going down? Because you would think during a recession, more people would want to play. Our parking records are much more reasonable than some franchise opportunities, so we're projecting that going down, too. And then building permits staying flat. I would think that with a 40%, 1% first quarter, we would project building permits to go a little bit higher, and they all make up that services line up there, and that's why I'm asking you.
We did. We took a conservative approach to building permits. That one can be discussed.
Okay.
But we, we thought that it was, we did discuss that and felt like we would project flat, no growth there.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, just, the General Services Links Committee, we met with Parks, and they've asked to increase their revenue by $140,300 for a part, for the golf courses. So we'll be making that as an amendment to the, at our Links presentation.
What was that number?
$140,300.
Then it'll be still 12, about $12,000 and a half. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Sure. Proceed.
Go ahead, Bill. Councilmember, Councilmember Gordon has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you, you haven't really gotten down to the other, so I didn't want to-
That's where I was going next.
Okay, go there.
Okay.
And then I'll ask.
The other line that I would draw your attention to would be other financing sources. And the 4.1 million was, was discussed in, in both Mary's presentation as well as the mayor's. This is the transfers from prison activity fund, the payment for the renewal of the landfill transfer station, coal severance, and mineral severance.
Okay. I just had a simple question about the $1 million transfer from the landfill fund. That did come up in our Links meeting, and I would simply ask that you or the appropriate person provide the documentation for why we did that and when it originated and how that came to be, because it's really only been verbally reported to this point, and I would like to see the documentation of why we do that, the legal authority and all And I appreciate it very much.
So, so I don't need to repeat? You want it in writing? Be glad to do that.
Yep. Well, I'd like the, we must have an ordinance or an agreement or a contract or some-
It's a contract.
Yes. If you could provide that to councilmembers, I, I'm not the only one who's expressed interest. I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Stenit.
On the other income line that we're talking about, you're talking about other financing, right?
I was talking about other financing sources under the 2010 mayor's proposed budget, 4.1 million.
Well, in our book, they lump them all together, so the other revenues, but the other income, we're projecting $2 million, $900,000 more than what we budgeted. Where did we, where are we getting that increase in other income, in that last line? That's not the, the additional net profits payment. You've already talked about that, but-
No, no, no. That, that's in license and permit.
Right.
And-
If you could find that out on the other, under other income, while we're getting another $900,000 this year, well, or 800 and change.
Well, the major change between '09 adopted and '09 projected is in what's called penalties and interest, and we had $990,000 budgeted, and we're projecting that to come in at 1.4 million in 2009.
Wow.
And that is from activities from both the Law Department and the Division of Revenue.
So you all feel the 1.3 that we're budgeting, which is, you know, half of '08, is reasonable for '10?
We do. Where is, the other thing I wanted to point out is there is no sale of property. Where is that?
Halfway up.
Okay. That has its own, okay. All right. Doesn't, doesn't relate to what you're asking me, then.
No, I was just curious if that 1.3 is too conservative of a number for able to-
Well, I can tell you what's in it. 1.2 million of that 1.3 is penalties and interest. The rest of it is small change in things like school board fee of $12,000, that kind of thing. So the big kahuna is penalties and interest.
Do we have a, have you all been measuring penalties and interest to see how, are they going up every year? Is that something that fluctuates a lot?
I don't have a three-year history on that, but I can get it for you.
Okay. I'd like to see it, if you don't mind. Thank you, sir.
Well, I will once again apologize. We really did, there were a whole bunch of pieces of paper on a great big long table, so I know that there were a lot of copies made. I will be glad to deliver all the handouts after the fact. Apologize for not having them during the presentation.
Bill, is there some way we could track somebody down? Is that, are the copies being made?
They were being made and collated when I walked in here at 10 till, so-
Okay. I can check with Maureen to check with, who should, who could she check with?
Well, 3355 is the, is the desk, but where she is is a different question.
Okay. And that is?
That's Kathleen.
Kathleen, okay.
My assistant. Yes.
I have one more question. You mentioned, you mentioned sale of property. Can you go into that in a little bit of detail? Or is that detail that Comer Cole, Commissioner Cole's shop would have, or who would have that?
Uh-
Specifics.
Specifics of which, which column?
Uh, sale of property. That is, let's see. You just mentioned it, Bill.
I did, and in the 2009 adopted budget, there was a $3 million budget for sale of property, and that did not occur. And I believe counsel may know more of the details of that than I do.
So do you know what property that was?
No, ma'am. I don't know any of the details about that.
So, so we haven't built anything into this budget for sale of property. Is that what you just said?
No, ma'am. I said that in the 2009 adopted budget, if you come down to the property sales line, it was originally budgeted at 3.6 million. We have projected sale of property revenues to be $500,000 for '09 and $179,550 for 2010.
But we don't-
So there are no major sale of property. This, this would be used vehicles, those kind of things.
Do we know why that is?
Why? Which is?
I mean, are we just so low on equipment, we can't sell any, or what's, do you have any idea?
Well, part of it is, is in the debt service. If you don't bond and buy new, you continue to use, so less used property goes on the market for, for sale, and that's a direct result of us not buying as many vehicles in 2010 as, as been done in the past.
And there's been discussions about property in terms of buildings and property other than vehicles and equipment. There've been discussions for several years about selling some of that property, realizing that the market's not good right now, but are we looking at any of that sort of thing right now or not?
I believe that would be Commissioner Cole's question.
Okay. And maybe someone else knows the answer to this.
I would say that this is general fund only that I've been speaking about today.
Well, if the government owns buildings that aren't being used, that we've discussed selling as surplus buildings, unless they're sanitary sewer or landfill or other-
Correct.
-it would be general fund.
That's correct.
I might just add a little bit while Ed's tied up here, but, and he can certainly add to this. We did talk about that at the Links meeting, and there, from what we were told, as I understand it, there aren't surplus buildings. There are surplus spaces, but not surplus buildings, but they're in the process of trying to do an analysis of all of the properties owned by the government, and will probably have some recommendations based on that.
And I think that's been going on for years, that analysis, has it not? Oh, Commissioner Cole's here.
Yeah, I noticed the commissioner just came in. Some, rather than me speak for her, she can speak for herself. The question, there are two questions. One may have been related to the fact that we sold less property this year, and I think that may relate to the fact that we sold less surplus cars because our fleet didn't mature as fast as we had planned, if that's correct.
Your question, are you talking about proposed for 2010 or what actually happened in '09?
Okay. Yeah, I guess it's tied into both of them. We had $500,000 in property sales, and we're going down to $179,550 for this coming fiscal year. And I believe that's because we didn't sell as much stuff for this year that we planned.
If you look at the property sales line and look at what was the adopted 2009 and then the projected 2009, the difference there was when we did the proposed budget, that was then the adopted budget last spring, in order to make it balance, we felt like we might need to sell a piece of, sell a piece of property or multiple pieces of property in order to generate the cash. As the year went on and we looked at what some of the options were, we did not bring forward a recommendation to counsel to sell a piece of property that would have, or pieces of property that would have mounted- of property that would have amounted to that $3 million. We made that decision earlier in this year that it, that we were not going to go forward with that. So that's why the $3 million decrease in that line. Now, when we look at the sale of surplus vehicles, we have reduced the number of the amount of surplus vehicle proceeds for 2010 over 2009 because we've taken another look at our fleet policies and procedures and how long we're going to hold on to a vehicle based upon the age of the vehicle and the usage of the vehicle. So we're proposing fewer vehicles will be sold in 2010.
Could I follow up on that, Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, and then I want to ask you another question.
Yeah. I think that one of the points was that about a year or so ago, there was a recommendation to sell a few more vehicles. And I think it was a judgment of the council at that time not to do so. So what has happened is we have our pool, the cars, we have extra cars in there, and so they're not being used that much. So rather than sell off a car with low mileage, I believe the General Services elected to keep them in service for another year or so, so we can get our adequate value out of the vehicle. And since we would be selling less cars out of the fleet, we would have less surplus property sold for this coming fiscal year. Did I state that correctly?
Close, with one exception. We're not holding on to the cars, we are holding on to the cars by not buying new cars to replace them. So also our, the capital requirements for new car purchases went down because we are, we've identified those cars that we can hold on for another year or two, rather than replace them during the upcoming budget year.
Do we confuse your, Councilmember Gordon?
My question's about property.
Okay.
Did I just understand you to say that, that we decided not to, we thought we would need revenue from selling a piece of property to balance the budget last year?
Correct.
And we decided not to sell it. Can you tell me a little bit about that? My curiosity is if the property is, whether it's not being used and why we decided not to try to sell it. Was it because of the market? Was it because we think we will use it? What, what was the thinking on that?
Well, there wasn't a specific piece of property.
Okay.
There were properties that were on the table as options.
Right.
And there's various different reasons and that, that why we looked at this when it decided the timing was not proper to offer up that sale. And then when it looked like we did not need to generate that revenue as a one-time cash influx, we decided to not, not go forward with that as a recommendation to the council in this year.
Okay.
Hold on, Commissioner, though. If we identify those properties, you said there's a number of them that we may not need, then why even keep them in the, I mean, why not just go ahead and get rid of them if we're not using them or don't need them?
I did not say we do not need them. What we identified were properties that did have a market value that we could consider selling. They are being used. They're not sitting there empty at the moment. They are being used.
So it was a backup plan, I guess, an emergency plan in the budget? If we needed some, we would? I mean, I just feel like if we're going to consider them and they were heavily considered and put on a list and we balanced the budget with it, go ahead and get rid of them. I mean...
And we can enter, we can entertain those discussions if you would like, but...
I don't think we, has anybody seen the list? Have we seen that list of properties?
No, there isn't a per se list of properties. I have had conversations with a couple of you that, where these properties exist in your districts. And in each case, there's been pros and cons to moving forward. And we decided at this point that it was not, it didn't make sense, the timing to move forward.
I thought you'd already identified the specific properties and there was a working list.
No.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Those fees hadn't gone up in many, many years. Is there any look at, maybe not for the retail people, but for people who rent monthly spaces, increasing those? And would that bring in some additional revenue or...
We did increase those in the past fiscal year. We, we have contracts. Some of those are month-to-month contracts. Some of them are annual and some of them are, are longer than that. We have gone through the process over the past two years of increasing the parking garage fees.
Okay.
However, at the same time, as we have shut down parking facilities and employees have had to move into other parking garages, it has, you haven't necessarily seen the revenue increases because of having to manage our own employees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Coe?
Cole?
Thank you.
Bill, you want... Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me here today, and I have prepared a present. You now have the handout. A little late, but nevertheless, it's here. I don't know, I was pretty much winding down and had finished my points that I wanted to point out, but I would be glad to either come back or answer questions now.
Mr. Stenit and Mr. Lang.
Bill, on the franchise fees that we're charging utility companies, we all seen, and it came, one came through a couple of weeks ago, and the water rates went up, utility rates have gone up through KU and Clem Bay Gas. Are we charging a percentage?
Yes.
So wouldn't our, aren't our revenues going to go up a little bit more than 3% based on some of those rate increases are double digits?
Well, yes and no. Because our total revenue is a function of two things, rate and usage. Usage is mother nature.
Well, ice storms and, I mean...
That's right. And if you don't have power for a week, then you don't get charged for that power for a week. If you have a dry summer and water your lawn, you use more water than if you have a wet May. So it, it's very unpredictable to predict the usage. The rate we know about. However, for instance, we know that total usage of water on average customer continues to go down. And that's due to either new construction with more efficient util, uh, things for the home or conservation. So again, you have a rate that went up, but you have a history where average usage has peaked and is actually eroding. So we, we did predict, I don't remember now.
Just 3% growth.
3%. We did not predict nine or eight. Five is, is realistic if, if we have a dry summer or a cold winter.
Well, I'm just looking at the 2009 original, we said we'd grow one and a half percent. And the projected '09, which what we're currently in, is going to grow 6.2%. And, you know, the 6.2 seems to be more in line with some of the past years. I mean, we've been all over the board on our prediction, our collection rates. 2004 was up 46%, 25% in '05, then we dropped off to four, four, five. And now we're saying three this year when we collected 6.2, or projected to collect at 6.2. So would 4% be way off? And that's what I'm trying to say, another percentage point. Because again, we got, we as a body have to say, here's how much revenues we're going to collect first before we go into giving up the expenditure side. So I'm trying to...
Councilmember Stenit. One can make a case for 4% as strongly as 3 or 5. Okay. I would just give you one caution. Remember, my first hat is the revenue guy. And with that role, I am a conservative by nature. No, no hiding behind that at all. I have felt uncomfortable with some of the projections that were presented in the past, and I was proven wrong. Hallelujah.
Yeah.
You know? So I do feel there's a lot of elasticity, there's an unpredictable in our largest sector. So if we reach on all of them, we have more exposure of not reaching our revenue. So it's just a matter of a play between the different line items as what the body is comfortable with in that projection.
Well, if three's conservative, four would be moderate and five would be liberal, right?
That's one way to look at it.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Lang.
You had mentioned a little bit earlier that you'd been following the revenue for the month of April. And I think previously, you may have said April 7th, a key point in the month because it will look at the March-April collections from taxes. Do you, can you talk about that a little bit today? And would that, would that have a positive or negative impact on your outlook for the projections for next year?
You're specifically referring to net profit?
Well, I was thinking, yeah, the data that you can collect on a monthly basis, right?
Yes, we have, from the back, one, two, three, six pages from the back is some month-to-month history for our net profit and has the April results in there. And if you look at just April, it is disappointing. We brought in 10.89 million compared to last year of 11.945. So month-to-month, that's a million dollars less than what we collected last year. And that also includes in '09, a significant one-time collection. So the April numbers show, as we expected, that net profits are going to be soft, and we predict that softness to carry through 2010. We did not predict that it would be that severe in the month of April. We have noted in payroll that more people are paying us late than ever before. So one wonders if that is part of this, and we will pick some of it up in May and June, or whether we truly have a more severe erosion in that line item than we had predicted for 2009. Did I dance around your question?
Well, what you're saying is not real optimistic.
It's not.
Based on the numbers.
Yeah, can you...
Thank you.
Could you do that again, Bill? Tell us what page that data's on.
Six pages from the back. I'm sorry, there are no page numbers.
All right. In your handout.
Yes, sir.
All right, gotcha.
And I tried to highlight in yellow what I thought, I mean, this is an accountant's dream because I've got all this information that I can refer to. But to try to summarize it, I tried to block out last year and this year and the variances, as well as what we had tried to do with monthly budgeting. This is our first foray into monthly budgeting, and we tried to do that on these revenue line items. And as I alluded to, at the end of December, we were actually $2 million ahead of same time last year. And I had expected the erosion in net profits to show up by then. And January, we had a dip, but then came back almost even for the month of February. So, and March was slightly ahead. So we did not see where we had dropped off the cliff. April is disappointing. We're 1 million less than where we were last year. We still are ahead 260,000 more than the same time last year. So I, there is, April is disappointing. Is one month a trend? That's what we have to wait and see.
And that, that 1 million includes, or that, that one-time item, is that our, the $900,000?
We had a significant collection in April that we had anticipated and incorporated in our 2009 projections. And that is included in that 10.89 million that shows up for April collections.
So absent that, would it be 10 million? Roughly, just order of magnitude, so we got an idea of what would, the delta, the difference.
That would be a working number.
These returns are really lagging numbers, too, because they reflect the revenue for last calendar year.
December 31st or due April 15th.
So in your budget process, if the economy's dipping in this calendar year, then our revenues for the third quarter, fourth quarter of fiscal year, 10 would be declining if that happened.
That's correct. We predicted $2 million less to be collected in 2010 on this line item than our 2009 collections as a reflection of this year's hard economy.
Any other questions? Any comments?
Vice Mayor, I like to, if I can, end on a glasses-half-full, rather than half-empty note. So if I can reach down and try to come up with a closing statement, instead of that being the last thing we talked about, I would remind you of the uniqueness of Lexington and why we feel that the recession will come here, but not as severely. And that is our large employer base being governmental and health services. And so I think that's quite unique, both in the nation as well as in Kentucky.
Bill, would you be able to give us a summary of this in sort of bullet point form, headlines that would give us, you know, like a one-page highlights?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. I think it'd be helpful. Terms of the percentages, we've, you know, we may have lost you of when we didn't have this, and now we're going to go back and need to refresh and collect, and it might be helpful to have that. Mr. Stenit.
And in an effort to help everybody, too, in the second book they handed out has all the detail of each one of these funds. So that, that gives you what each one of those, for the, especially the new council members, it breaks it down a lot better than this, kind of gives you some more dialogue and what makes up those funds. So thank you, Bill, for preparing the summary through the budget, because that's, that's much more helpful than just looking at the, the big book.
That goes to Mary Fister in the Budget Department. So thank you for your compliment.
Okay, anybody else? Anything? No? Got a motion to adjourn? Mr. Blues, motion's second? Got a second? Got a second? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, Bill.